So CUNY TV, we are now in public session. Okay, members of the Board of Trustees Committee on Faculty, Staff and Administration, please respond, present when you hear your name. We are waiting on Lorene, we'll come back to that. Vice Chairperson Ken Sunshine.
Present.
Great trustee Una Clark. Let's see, Una yet, trustee Armenia Palacio.
Present.
Great trustee Angela Mivolo.
Present.
Angela, Professor Karen Coughlin.
Present.
Hey Karen.
You go.
Professor Maureen Matarazier, is she gonna be joining us tonight?
She's not gonna be joining tonight, no.
Got it.
Thank you.
The student representative Luis D'Amelio.
Present, I'm here.
Great, how are you? Okay, and Sevilla Waronker, the student alternate.
She cannot make it.
Okay, great, so we do actually have a quorum. This public meeting of the Committee on Faculty, Staff and Administration is now called to order. I'd like to take a roll call attendance for members of the Chancellery. Members of the Chancellery, please respond, present when you hear your name. Chancellor Matos Rodriguez, don't see yet. General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs Derek Davis.
Present.
Great, Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Hector Batista.
Present.
Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Wendy Hensel.
Present.
And just, we'll introduce Wendy to the group, say hello. Senior Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace. I don't see Glenda yet. Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria.
Present.
Great. And Vice Chancellor James Gail.
Present.
Terrific. President Thomas Isakaneegby is the COPS liaison.
Present.
Terrific. I'm in El Mahondas, the Dean of the Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy.
Present.
Terrific. Ashish Joshi, the Provost of the School of Public Health and Health Policy.
I will represent the school today.
Got it, so I will take his name, his name was given to me. Eva Fernandez, interim Vice President for Academic Affairs and Provost at Gutman Community College.
Present.
Terrific. Steve Everett from the Graduate Center.
Present.
Terrific. Anne Lopes is the Provost and Senior Vice President of Academic Affairs at Brooklyn College.
Present.
Okay, Jennifer Rad, President of Hunter College.
That's it.
Judith Masses Sanchez, interim General Counsel, Queens College. Great, and President Patricia Ramsey from Medgar Evers College.
Present.
Terrific, okay, so that's everything Ken. And it's 6:14.
All right, so let's, let's plow ahead and Lorene will probably join at some point.
Yep.
Let's, let's turn to the items requiring a vote today. Given that all board members are participating remotely, I will announce the resolutions and ask for members to respond only if you would like to abstain or oppose an item. Otherwise, your vote will be recorded as a yes vote. If you are voting no or abstaining, please state your name and vote. Additionally, if you wish to second an item or have any questions, please state your name first for the record. And let's try to avoid speaking over one another. Let's take up the following items for approval. Action item 1A is the approval of the minutes for the March. It says March, April 25th, 22 meeting, Gail, which is it?
Uh, sorry, that's weird, it should say, it should say April 25th.
Yeah, so for the April 25th meeting. I move the, the approval of action item 1A, do I have a second?
Second, Alasia.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? We will now vote, please respond if you would like to abstain or oppose. That motion is carried. Policy item B1. The, on the policy calendar. Is a resolution to approve the Committee on Faculty, Staff and Administration report. I will now call Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria to present further background on this item.
Dorian, just, I gave you sharing so that you, I know you might have a presentation, so you, you're able to share your screen.
So, so before Dorian does her presentation, she gets herself ready, I just wanted to say a couple of words. I mean, I think that today what we're gonna do is try to really give a sense of how, how we look at this report and how we use this report, but I think Dorian is gonna really begin to sort of frame for the committee. Sort of the contents of, of, of the actions and, and. So we're gonna properly just try to get the committee sort of up to speed on, on the different things that we are able to look at as a university. I think that then that would inform sort of future reports. I think we, we heard the committee loud and clear about making sure that we, we properly sort of give some framework for, for this report, so I think Dorian is gonna begin that today, we had lengthy discussion with the Chair of the Committee to try to make sure that we, we begin with really framing, framing this report a little bit more clearer for the board, so with that, I'll turn it over to Dorian.
Okay, thank you, thank you Hector. So yes, the Committee has requested additional context to the information in the CFSA report, so just a little bit of background. The CFSA report was created as a result of the December 10th, 2018 Board Resolution identifying actions that would require this Committee's approval, including appointments and terminations in the Executive Compensation Plan and appointment of faculty with tenure, with fellowship leaves, and as named chairs. Many of these actions require a formal resolution, but for those that instead are reported via the CFSA report, these actions go through a thorough assessment and approval process prior to the Committee's review, including personnel and budget committee recommendation and or presidential approval at the campus level. For ECP employees, the presidential approval is followed by an additional review and compensation analysis by university HR. Chair Quetis Vasquez has asked that I share some additional information with the Committee today, focusing on appointments and reappointments. Today's data reflects the faculty and ECP actions that appear on the May 2022 CFSA report. And these actions are entered at the campus level into the CUNY system of record between March 26, 2022 and May 6, 2022. The report contains a total of 155 actions, including 62 fellowship leaves, 40 appointments and reappointments with tenure, and 33 ECP intern and regular appointments. And I'm going to see if I can just share my screen for a moment. And for some reason I cannot show my windows.
Well, I'm gonna double check that you are, yeah, you have permission. There you go.
All right, thank you, took me a minute, too many things open. So this is just to show you a little bit more about the breakdown of the information that is contained within the numbers that I just mentioned. So you'll see, for example, a tenured faculty, we have 40. ECP acting or intern, we have eight appointments, nine reappointments, and three resignations. And then you also see the regular ECP, and there were seven appointments, nine reappointments, and five resignations there. If we look at it a couple of different other ways, we can also see appointments and reappointments by employee classification and college type. So you'll note that we have good central office, senior colleges, and community colleges, and so that you can get a sense of how it looks there as well. And we'll just point out a couple of things. We've got a total of 37 actions for the senior colleges, 26 for community, and 10 for the central office. And then if we wanted to just look at it in another way, we just pulled out the faculty actions by college. And you'll see with that, 17 fellowship leaves at the MCC, for example, 11 at Bronx Community College. And this is a total of 102 actions out of the total 155 that we just mentioned. So this is just really examples of ways that we can sort of slice and dice the information a little bit more. And this is open to any input, and I see your Chair has joined us. So this may be something that you may want to look at in different ways as we move forward. Chair Quetis Vasquez, did you wanted to comment on that before I move forward to the next?
I, I just wanted to thank you, Dorian Gloria, for, for doing this because one of the things we had spoken about at one of the former meetings was about getting some context for the numbers that HR, you know, usually gives us, and we knew that there was a lot of work that goes into those numbers, but it was very good to get this presentation from the, from the Vice Chancellor to introduce us to how she produces these numbers. And, you know, and to give them some life and some story, so I really appreciate your doing that, and so then you could and what we, what, which is gonna do is look at both her and Executive Vice Chancellor Batista, what they're gonna do is look at, you know, presentations, you know, the next one may be on DEI and, you know, some, some additional work, so that we could just get a real sense of, of what's go, of, of the, of the not to get in the weeds and not to micromanage, but just to get a real good sense of the direction and, and reassure us that it's going in the, in the direction that the, the government instructed. The trustees have requested, so I really thank you for that. Continue, I didn't mean to interrupt your, your presentation.
No, not at all, thank you, I was actually just going to show a little bit of the DEI, DEI information that is available, as you had requested. I know we're running a little late today, but if you want me to still do that, I can do that really quickly.
Yeah, please do, you put good work into that, please do.
Okay, so this is information that's readily available on our public site, and as I wanted to familiarize people with it. And there are a number of different tools here that I think people will find of interest. Takes a couple of minutes to load, I apologize. And so you'll see, as you go through this, that this is our staff facts, we do this every single year, we run it based on numbers in November. And it literally slices and dices our information in a variety of ways in terms of our employee demographics, and so this is just an example, I invite you to take a look at some of this information that's there. And we can certainly dive into any of these things in depth that you may wish to take a look at. So that is the one that is done annually. And if you want to take a look at something like, for example, a demographic report, we do that on a regular basis. But we also do it on a three-year comparison, and this also looks at data in, again, a very different way. And you can click on any of the colleges or any of the groupings that you're interested in looking at. And I know it gets a little dizzying when you take a look at it like this, but when you're looking at it page by page, I think you'll see that it gives you a really great quick snapshot for information that sort of, you know, comes to life when you look at it over an extended period. And same thing for the archives, you can see you can go all the way back to 2000. And I think when you're looking at data over that long of a period, you really do get to see a very interesting picture. And same thing with our staff facts dated back to 2003. So again, this is available on our public site, and if there's anything at any point that we want to explore even further, I think this is a great starting point for discussion. So I will take my screen down now, and that was all I had for now. If you want me to answer any questions, or we can continue to the other policy items, thank you.
I just want to add one thing, I think it's important to note to the trustees that we're gonna pick a particular area as, as the Chair indicated, and wanna do a deep dive and make sure that you guys sort of have an understanding of what's going on. I wanna publicly give credit to Dorian and her team, they've done an amazing job of really capturing this data and making sure now we have it in real time, I mean, there's no, it is something that, you know, we, we will be able to provide whatever information you need, and then you begin to see how we're sort of making decisions as a university, where the Chancellor might have certain things that he wants us to focus on in terms of certain, certain areas, in terms of employment, that we, you know, we have a lot of great data, so. And I, you know, I just wanted to sort of give that framework.
Yeah, and at, at, at a later point, Dorian, it'll be great to do the, the, the demographics that you did before, the ones that you showed, because one thing is looking at it page by page, when you look at it as a, on a, on a glass, on a graph, it tells a thousand words, and so I think that would be helpful for us in the future, and then the same information is available by university, so that we can see where the challenges are and where the Chancellor and his team are putting efforts to make sure that those challenges are addressed, so it's, it's, it's all directionally correct, and we really thank you for, for your time and your attention on this.
Can I, can I just second, we, frankly, we should have pushed for this a long time ago, the history of this Committee, but it was our Chair who really did push for it, this, this will be a decided improvement. Bravo.
Yeah, yeah, bravo to the team, yeah. Um, okay, so, Madam Secretary, where are we?
So the Vice Chair ably stepped in on policy item B1, so we've now presented it, you have to move it, so we can approve it.
Okay.
So should be on page three of your script, yep.
I have it in reverse order, all right, so, um, did we move it already?
Nope.
No, okay, do we have a motion to, to approve this, this item?
I make a motion.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Great, thank you, any, any, any discussion? None, hearing none, we're gonna vote now. All right, hearing no abstentions or objections, this item moves, we're gonna go to item B2, which is a resolution to appoint Livia Kenjemi as Vice President for Finance, Human Resources, and Business Development at Hunter College. I again will call on Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria to bring us some background on this item.
Livia Kenjemi has been serving as Assistant Vice President of Planning and Budget since April 2018, and has been managing the college's financial health, planning, and business operations. Ms. Kenjemi has played a pivotal role during her 18 years of service at Hunter, overseeing a variety of business operations, including serving as the Security Administrator on all bank accounts, the preparation and analysis of financial statements, 990 tax returns, and other financial reports as required by the University Controller's Office, and managing the budgetary activities of facilities and capital projects of the college. Ms. Kenjemi holds a BA in Accounting from Hunter College and is a Certified Public Accountant. Pending approval by the Board of Trustees, this appointment will be effective May 6, 2022, at a salary of $275,000 per year. The President highly recommends this appointment.
Thank you. Do I have a, I now move for the approval of policy item B2, do I have a second?
A second.
Right, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we're gonna call this for vote. Hearing no objection or objections, this item carries. Policy item B3 is a resolution to appoint Antoinette Coleman as Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs at Medgar, Edgers College. I now again call on Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria to provide background on this item.
Dr. Antoinette Coleman is currently serving as the Associate Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs in the Office of Academic and Student Affairs at the University System of Maryland, and was previously the Assistant Vice President of Academic Affairs and Professor at Morgan State University in HBCU and Maryland's Preeminent Public Urban Research University. Dr. Coleman holds both a PhD in Administration, Policy and Research, and MA of Social Work in Clinical Social Work from the School of Social Work at the University of Maryland Baltimore, and a BA in Sociology from the University of Maryland Eastern Shore. Section 6.2. B of the Bylaws of the Board of Trustees states that a distinguished person of proven record appointed to the title of Associate Professor or the title of Professor who had tenure at another accredited institution of higher learning may be appointed with immediate tenure by the Board in its discretion. Pending approval by the Board of Trustees, this appointment as Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs will be effective August 15, 2022, at a salary of $270,000 per year. Dr. Coleman will also be appointed as a full Professor of Social Work with tenure at Medgar Evers College effective August 15, 2022, and placed on leave while she serves as Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs. The President highly recommends this appointment.
I move the approval of policy item B3, do I have a second? Second, somebody?
A second.
Thank you so much Angelo. Uh, any discussion? Uh, hearing none, we're gonna call for a vote. Hearing no objections or extension, this vote carries. I wanna congratulations, Antoinette Coleman, and I also wanna congratulate Livia Kenjemi. Item B5, you're welcome. Uh, item B5, uh, wait a minute, did I miss one?
B4, you mean.
I mean B4, of course I meant B4. Item B4 is a resolution to amend Queens College Academic Senate Charter. Oh, to add one member to the non-teaching instructional staff to search and review the Committees for Dean, the Provost and Chief Librarian. I'm gonna call on Vice Chancellor Dorian Gray to, to give us some more background on this.
Lorene, this one is actually me, Judith Masses Sanchez, interim General Counsel at Queens College.
Okay, that would've been great, Judith, go ahead, thank you very much.
Sure, members of the Administration of Queens College petitioned the Academic Senate to add a member of the non-teaching instructional staff to college search and review committees for deans, the provost and chief librarian, and the Queens College Academic Senate voted unanimously to recommend this change. Queens College President Frank Wu supports these changes to the Charter of the Academic Senate. If approved, this resolution resolves that the proposed amendment to the Queens College Academic Charter be adopted effective June 27, 2022.
Thank you for that, and I'm sorry for the confusion, I'm just getting budget bullets as, as this meeting is going on, so. Do, do I have a second for this item?
Second, Alasia.
Thank you, Armenia. Do I have a, any discussion on this? No, hearing no discussion, we'll now move it to a vote. Hearing no abstentions or objections, this item carries. Policy item B5 is a resolution to amend the Queens College Academic Senate Charter to change the divisions to schools. At the beginning of 2021 and 2022, the academic, in this academic year, Queens College President Frank Wu requested that the Senate amend the college's governance plan, the Senate Charter, to finalize a name change in the current academic department, other units, and programs from divisions to schools. The Academic Senate unanimously voted to recommend these changes. Again, interim General Counsel at Queens College Judith Massey Sanchez is gonna give us some additional background.
Uh, thank you Lorene, again, at the beginning of the 2021, 2022 academic year, the President Wu requested that the Senate amend the college governance plan, which is the Senate Charter, to finalize its name change in the current academic departments, other units, and programs from divisions to schools. The Senate did unanimously vote to recommend these changes, and if approved, this resolution revolves, resolves that the proposed amendment to the Charter of the Queens College Academic Senate changes the name of the academic departments, other units, and programs from divisions to schools would be effective June 27, 2022.
Thank you so much for that, do I have a second?
Second, Coughlin.
Right. Do, any discussion on this item? Hearing no discussion, we're gonna move this for a vote. Hearing no objections or abstentions, this item carries. This, the, the next four items, B6 through B10, are resolutions to award early tenure with an application of Bylaw 6.2C2 to the following faculty members. Kathryn Pace Miles from Brooklyn College, Christopher Lopereña, Lopereña, I'm sorry, from the Graduate Center, Karen Flores, the Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy, Gato Solisman, the Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy, and Monica Edwards at Gutman Community College. Chancellor, the Provost is not here to usually give some background. I think we may want to, in this case, forego that, because we have a lot of confidence in this process now. So I'm just gonna call, I'm gonna move the item unless you would like to add anything.
I am here, if you'd like me to.
Your new Provost is here.
I was, I was, I was, I was, God, is this some kind of a, of a test, so, you know?
Oh yeah, this is, this is.
Perfect segue for me to introduce our, our new Provost, Wendy Hensel.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you, Dr. Hensel, this is, um, this is just my getting acquainted. Great, great to, to see you and great to hear from you, so can you please give us some background on these items?
Will, will do. For Kathryn Pace Miles, Dr. Miles is esteemed by the early childhood education community as an exceptional talent. She has extensive peer-reviewed publications in leading national and international literacy journals, and has broad applied educational experience which enriches her teaching. Since her arrival at Brooklyn College, she has taught introductory as well as advanced early childhood education courses, led the training of 180 Brooklyn College early childhood students in reading rescue intervention, and provided tutoring for over 200 Department of Education high needs emergent readers. Would you like me to just present them all at the same time, would that be the best?
You could present them all, present them all at the same time, and you could be brief, because, you know, we've, unless you wanna do this any way you want, Provost, this is your meeting and this is your section.
All right. Christopher Lopereña merits early tenure and promotion to Associate Professor as an outstanding scholar whose research is important and distinctive. He's one of the most recognized anthropologists currently working. In his record publication and service demonstrates a career trajectory that suggests it will continue. Let's see, Gada Solomon from Public Health and Policy is a leader within that school and strengthens its commitment to improve health and social justice in New York City. Her molecular research is a faculty affiliate at CUNY's Advanced Science Research Center, and the expertise she lends to professional organizations bring recognition to the school and the university. Dr. Karen Flores, Flores, sorry, is highly valued by the faculty. Dr. Karen Flores, Flores, sorry, is highly valued by the faculty of the Environmental Occupation and Geospatial Health Sciences Department as a leader with interdisciplinary skills in research, teaching and service. And she's an invaluable member of that faculty consistently securing research funding from multiple federal agencies and foundations. And finally, Marcia Edwards is highly rated by her students. Has demonstrated outstanding mentorship to peers through her services coordinator for the college's Associate Program for Human Services. Her body of work coupled with her extensive experience in social service and experiential education and many other areas will afford the college greater stability in this particular discipline. And I will stop there.
Thank you so much. Just for the record, there is a slight confusion. Is it Marcia or Monica?
I have Marcia.
Okay.
My mistake.
Okay, great. For the record, it's Marcia, not Monica as the, so we want to amend the.
The reso is actually correct. It was a typo in the, in the script.
Okay.
I just checked the reso. The reso is correct.
Thank you so much. Well, Gail, it's not correct on the document I have. So if your reso is correct, that's not what I read.
No, I know. That's why I'm saying I made a mistake, Lorraine.
I, I got it. I got that. I got that. But I, so the, the reso doesn't have to be amended? You said?
The reso is actually, so we just went, when, we will just make a note that item B and, and her reso in particular is item B10. So it's just, it should reflect Marcia Edwards. Okay?
Good, good. You see, provost, we just wanted to make your first meeting, keep us all on our toes. Thank you. I move the approval of items B6 through B10. Is there a second for that?
Second, Palacia.
Thank you. Any discussion? Wonderful. Now we'll have a vote. All right. Hearing no abstention or oppositions, congratulations to all of our faculty members who are getting early tenure and welcome and look forward to working with you, provost.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Policy item B11 is to name Louise Thalma Endowed Fellowship at Hunter College. And now I call on Senior Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace to provide further information on this item.
So good, good evening, everyone. I apologize for being late. I had some issues getting on. But I'm excited that you're going to not have to listen to me as much anymore. But instead, you're going to be able to hear from my new wonderful colleague, Vice Chancellor James Gallo, who's going to talk about the three namings that we have.
Sure. Thank you, Glenda. Good evening, everyone. The first naming is to name the Louise Thalma Endowed Fellowship at Hunter College. Madeline Day, a proud Hunter College alumna from the class of 53, made a gift of $100,000 to the Hunter College Foundation. This fellowship in honor of Louise Thalma, a faculty member at Hunter for over 50 years and an accomplished American composer and pianist, will create an endowed scholarship which will be available to students in Hunter's music composition program. The university enthusiastically recommends this naming.
Thank you so much, James. Do I have a second for this item? Thank you, Angelo. Thank you, Angelo. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, we're going to call this for a vote. Hearing no abstentions or objections, this item carries. The item, policy item B12 is to name Helen Zia, Assistant Director of the Asian American Studies Program at Hunter College. And now I'm going to call on James Gallo to provide further background on this item. Is that correct, Glenda? Yes, thank you. All right.
So in February 2022, two anonymous donors made a gift of $1 million to Hunter College Foundation. This position will serve as the Assistant Director of the Program and Center and will teach courses, participate in program planning and curriculum development, take part in advising, engage with faculty and supervise adjuncts as well as work to establish external connections for the center. Helen Zia is a prominent Asian American activist and writer who has advocated against racial bias and plays an important role in the AAPI movement. The university, again, enthusiastically recommends this naming at Hunter.
Thank you so much. I move the approval of item B12. Do I have a second?
Palacia, second.
Thank you so much. Any discussion on this item? We'll now call for a vote. Hearing no, was that a comment? No? Hearing no objections or abstentions, this item carries. Congratulations, Jennifer, again, on this kind of an award. Now we'll go to policy item 13, which is to name the Jackson Muriel Lum Computer Nursing Lab at Queensborough Community College. And now we'll call back on James Gallo to give us some background on that.
Thank you. Jackson and Muriel Lum are longstanding supporters of Queensborough Community College. Jackson was a professor at Queensborough for over three decades in the Electrical Engineering Department. Muriel emigrated to the US from Hong Kong with her parents in 1956. They have made several six-figure gifts to Queensborough, including $100,000 in 2021 to establish an endowed scholarship and now $500,000 to support students in Queensborough's nursing program. This resolution will name the computer nursing lab at Queensborough. The university, again, enthusiastically recommends this naming.
Thank you so much. I move the approval of policy item B13. Do I have a second?
Second, Palacia.
Thank you. Any discussion? Now we'll call it for a vote. Hearing no abstentions or objections, this item carries. Congratulations, Queensborough Community College. And thank you for enduring my distraction as I was getting budget bulletins, which are pretty important on my end. Hearing, there are no more items on this agenda, so I move to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
May I ask a question, madam?
Oh, yes, you may.
Thank you. In the resolution for Karen Flores, who is being considered for early tenure and approved as such, she's also being promoted to Associate Professor. Was that a separate item and not in your consideration?
It's not in, it was not part of the resolution and I do not believe that it was for our consideration.
Thank you very much. I was just trying to make sure. Thank you very much for allowing me to ask a question.
Dean Elmahandaz, you can check the resolution on the board's website, but it is not part of the resolution that was provided just to early tenure.
All right.
So promotions are considered elsewhere?
Yes, we can take this offline. Okay?
Yes. But just congratulations because she has early tenure. So we're really happy to announce that. All right?
Very grateful to you, madam. Thank you.
Oh, please, by all means. And it's great seeing you again. Last time I saw you, we were on a panel together.
So happy to see you, madam.
Great. So did I get a second to adjourn this meeting?
Second.
Thank you so much. That being said, this meeting is adjourned.